To assess the referral, the entry and the discharge process of all of the private providers, substance abuse providers in Cumberland County to just determine how does that process work? And to know if there are any gaps or barriers in our residents receiving treatment. And if there are, we will look to resolve that just to make it easier for our community members to access and receive treatment as easily as possible, just to provide accessibility. Uh, the next accomplishment that we had was we established two partnerships. Operation Ceasefire and Operation Inasmuch. We partnered with Operation Ceasefire who is based in Fayetteville. Um, they work to reduce violent crime and just the number of drugs that are in Fayetteville. We also partnered recently with Operation Inasmuch. They are a non, they are a, um, excuse me, a faith-based nonprofit who specializes in health and education of community members. All three of our, all three of us, uh, C four, Operation Inasmuch, Operation Ceasefire. A lot of our work touches base and crosses over. So we want to explore partnership and just see if those partnerships could be mutually beneficial. But this is another action plan that we've accomplished, just reaching out and making these partnerships. Next, uh, we partnered with North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition. And in December of 2020, we had funds to create naloxone kits, uh, naloxone or Narcan, um, as some of you otherwise may know it as. Uh, it's an opioid antagonist. So when someone experiences an opioid overdose, they actually stop breathing or their breathing slows down, um, significantly, the Narcan, Narcan or naloxone, it reverses that, allowing the individual to breathe again, um, and bringing them back to consciousness and otherwise saving their life. Uh, we partnered with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition, creating naloxone kits that we paired with the Community Resource Guide for EMS to pass throughout the community. And the goal is that, uh, not only to save lives with the naloxone, but also for them to have it on hand. And also if individuals who are using, were looking to access services, they have this Community Resource Guide that now they stay know where they can access services throughout Cumberland County. Um, next, we implemented a second survey. Um, this is a community perception survey. The purpose of this survey was twofold. First, just to determine if there are any stigma throughout Cumberland County. So if people have negative attitudes towards, um, substance abuse, addiction, uh, people in recovery, or towards positive efforts made towards people in recovery, we just want to determine if there are any stigma that we need to address. Secondly, we also want to know if community members are aware of the programs in Cumberland County. And we do this just to guide our interventions, just to know that we're putting them where the community actually needs. So for example, if there aren't stigma, but people are unaware of where services are throughout the community, we know a lot and that we need to shift our education into letting people know, okay, this is what's available, this is where it is. So just so that we can work smart. We're always going to work hard, but we want to make sure that we're also working smart and putting the proper interventions where the community needs. Um, next, so we had four new hires. Um, again, I mentioned, we partnered with the North Carolina Harm Reduction Coalition. They hired three new outreach specialists in the fall of 2020. Um, also I was hired, um, late October of 2020. Um, these are all, uh, items that are on our action plan. Um, we have, um, our grant allocates for our salaries. So we hired, uh, made these four new hires in late 2020. So our next steps, so we, um, we still have, um, several things that we're looking to accomplish off our action plan, but I'm just going to focus on some of the big things. Um, so a really big, um, next accomplishment that we're looking to achieve is implementing an opioid fatality review team here in Cumberland County, um, just for those who are unaware of fatality review teams. Essentially, it's a team of stakeholders who study the such, the circumstances that led to an untimely death. Um, some of the more widely known fatality review teams are, uh, childhood death or domestic violence, uh, fatality review teams. But we'll be looking to implement opioid overdose fatality review, uh, review team. Essentially just understanding someone, knowing the circumstances that led to a person taking opioids, overdose, overdosing and unfortunately dying, taking those findings and making recommendations to advocate for changes to prevent future deaths in the future. So that's what we're going to be looking to implement in 2021. Um, that's like a really big thing. Um, to my knowledge, there's only one other county in North Carolina that has an opioid overdose fatality review team, Onslow County. Uh, I'm not aware of anymore, but I would say we would be the second. And even just nationally, um, there aren't too many opioid overdose, uh, review teams. So we really would be on the cutting edge and doing something that is really trailblazing that hasn't even been done, uh, in the state and nationally. So that's a really, a really big next step for us. Um, just navigating COVID-19, um, we are still meeting virtually once a month. Um, we shifted our in-person meetings to using Zoom. Uh, we're going to be continuing to do so until it's safe otherwise. Um, also, um, just our members are also utilizing WebEx, Zoom, uh, and other virtual platforms just to continue their work. So there are some items on our action list that don't necessarily require, um, uh, being in person with some of the external people that they're working with. So maybe if they can just work organizationally, or if they can just be a Zoom or other virtual platforms, um, they're going to be continuing to do that. Um, unfortunately, there are some items that require meeting in person. So for example, um, one item is we're looking to implement a jail-based education, educational curriculum because people newly released from jail are actually 40 times more likely than any other demographic to overdose. So that's a huge, uh, they're a very, very, very vulnerable population and we're looking to implement intervention to help them. But unfortunately jails aren't letting outside personnel inside right now. So we, that's something, just an example of something that we have to put on hold. But as soon as COVID makes things safe, we're gonna definitely gonna be looking to implement that. Um, so next, I'm just going to provide some updates on data. I'm going to provide some historical data. So the North Carolina Injury and Violence Prevention Branch, they conducted a statewide, um, study on all drugs, um, county by county, but going specifically on opioids. There were 405 opioid overdose, overdose deaths here in Cumberland County from 2009 to 2018. Um, 208 of them actually occurred in 2016, 17 and 18. So things got really bad really quickly and then in 2016, it just really got crazy. Um, also from 20, 2009 to 2018, there were over 1,500 overdoses during that time period. Um, for some reason, the Injury and Violence Prevention Branch doesn't report back, doesn't report out on the 2015 data, that's absent. So this number is probably 1,600 or 1,700. And again, from that three-year time period, 2016, 17 and 18, there were actually 966 overdoses just in that three-year time period. So things got really, really bad. Um, but fortunately, they, excuse me, things are getting a little bit better. We had 255 overdoses in 2020 and that was down from 287 in 2019. And that was also down from an all-time high in 2018 where there were 430. So I think that that is indicative of the great work that C four is doing, that we're seeing, uh, starting to slowly trend down. Um, and also especially with COVID-19 actually is exasperating the opioid epidemic. Um, all across the state, uh, the numbers are actually increasing. Uh, so I think that for us to have been so high and now that we're slowly starting to go down, even with COVID-19, I think that that's really a big win, um, for C four and just Cumberland County. Uh, just kind of some more updates on unique to Cumberland. Uh, about 40% of the overdoses here involve heroin. Uh, it's the biggest offender. Next, medication. Heroin is definitely the most consistently, the most widely abused drug that people unfortunately overdose and die from. Um, also 25 to 34-year-olds, really 25 to 44, but this is actually stratified into two different groups. But 25 to 44-year-olds are the most, are, um, the most severely impacted group with 25 to 34-year-olds being unique to Cumberland County. Um, because historically, uh, people that young don't, aren't as affected as they are in Cumberland County as they are nationwide and North Carolina-wide. So Cumberland is unique in that regard that young people are being affected. Um, so that's all that I, sorry. So that's all that I have. Um, are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, first of all, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
I haven't seen you before today. You said this was secured in 2018?
Yes.
It's a three-year grant, uh, because of COVID and having to get with the other folks, the city, ceasefire, inasmuch, everything to get it, you know, actually an entity. Are they going to give us from '21 to '24 since it's just now kind of taking shape? Or is it going to run out this year because it started back in 18?
And I apologize, our grant is actually from 2019 to 2022. It'll be late, ending in 2022.
Okay.
I apologize.
Well, I just saw 2018 was, I guess, when it all got together, but that's even, not as good as starting now for three years, but will take the year. Um, how many total members are on this team or task force?
There's about 90 or so. They sometimes coming over, there's at least 90.
90, right?
Yeah. Yes, yes, sir. Um, all of them are, don't always come to the meetings, but just like official meetings, about 90.
Uh, what, on making up those kits, ballpark, about what do those cost?
I don't have that exact number, but I can figure out for how much that costs. I've had that number written down, but I can figure that out.
Okay, I didn't know if they're like, it's a hundred dollar throw-together kid or a five thousand dollar throw-together kid. So, uh, and then you said you give them to handouts to, uh, members in the community. Is that fire departments, schools, hospitals?
So we were passing that out to EMS. We provided the naloxone kits to EMS and then when they respond to an overdose, then they give it out through the community.
Okay.
That's how it would work. Sorry if that was a little confusing, I apologize.
No, no, I didn't know if we would have, like, you know, the joke was if we'd just given the vaccines to Chick-fil-A, everybody would have theirs by now. I don't know if we're going to like use like the CVSs and some of the, uh, other, you know, they're all in every corner, you know, the old Eckerd drugs are gone, but you know, you have CVS and all, and then you use those distribution points because most of them are open up pretty late at night, not, not like hospital 24/7, but very informative.
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Keith.
Um, I got a couple of them. So apparently, uh, Anne and Chris, well, welcome. Um, I'm not going to ask you some of the deep questions because I realize you've only been here like four months. Um, so you're not aware of everything that happened. I'm probably going to go into Dwayne on some of these. So I understand we have two grants, right?
Yes, sir.
What kind of money are we talking about?
So the grant that, this specific grant is, so it's technically 899,000 and some change, but essentially 900,000.
Is that for both the Justice Department, Department of Justice grant and?
No, sir. The Department of Justice and the BGA grant, that's 900,000.
Together?
Uh, no, just the depart, just the DOJ grant, that's 900,000.
What about one that'll be, the first one we got?
I'm not aware of that grant, how much specifically that one is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, the first grant, two-year grant, and it was for $20,000.
Just 20,000?
That's all.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. It was, it was strictly meant to be a planning grant.
Okay. So 2019, we had that. So where are we? Um, one of the reasons that we're out here and, and Chris, you, you mentioned Onslow County, because Onslow County was actually one of the worst counties in, in the state. I think New Hanover and Onslow were in bad shape and we were close behind. Where are we now?
We are still doing pretty bad, um, North Carolina, um, just compared to the North Carolina average and compared to North Carolina, uh, other counties. Um, so we're slowly improving so far. So in this past December, we were actually outside of the top 10 in terms of the Emergency Department overdose rate. Um, so emergency, hospitals get, uh, emergency department numbers and they will pull out, um, quarter by quarter. And then this past December, we were outside of the top 10 and that was a place that we have been, we've actually been in number one at times this year. So we're slowly, um, so we're slowly getting better, but generally speaking, we're still doing pretty poorly.
Not this year, but in the past, we've been, uh, as far as number one.
No, we were actually number one in September.
But I mean, for December, starting in December, we got better.
Oh, you're talking about this past, yes, sir. This past December, we've gotten better, just throughout 2020, excuse me. Thank you, Dwayne.
I'm, I'm sorry, Chris. So where, where were we throughout 2020?
So 2020.
Were we out of the top 10?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so you, you had mentioned the, the Narcan.
Yes, sir.
And it's going to emergency services. I had a conversation over a year ago that, I don't know if you're aware, but many times the city of Fayetteville, all of their fire departments have Narcan on them. So if something happens in the city of Fayetteville, we don't have any of those kits for volunteer fire departments who are normally the first responders that are on there.
Yes, sir. Um, last, uh, I believe it was last spring, Melissa Larson, who's the coordinator of our, uh, former coordinator, excuse me, we have Chris now. She was the former coordinator of our Cumberland Fayetteville opioid response team. She joined, uh, myself, Tracy Jackson, and may have been one other individual. We actually did attend a volunteer fire depart, uh, chiefs meeting. And we extended the invitation for naloxone. To my knowledge, we had some that asked questions, but we had none of the volunteer fire departments that actually followed through in saying that they wanted the naloxone from us.
Dwayne, out of respect, I'm, I'm going to defer a little bit with you on that because you didn't bring, come up with a real plan on how to do it or anything else. You just said that it's going to become available.
We, we asked them to contact us. We did.
Yeah, you know what? I don't think, I don't think that there was a big outreach to have that happen because they're not aware of how to do that right now. Um, I want, I want to go a, a little bit into some of the other things that, that Chris, um, my point is that many, many times before EMS gets to a place, even in the city of Fayetteville, in Hope Hills, in Spring Lake, wherever it is, a lot of times the first people that show up at a house are not the ambulance. It's, it's the volunteer or the, or the paid firefighters that, that go there. And the city of Fayetteville has, so if you happen to overdose in the city of Fayetteville, you got a much better chance of surviving if unless, if you're out of the city of Fayetteville. And if the kits are available and word, and the word is not getting to them, then that's, that's on us is, that's on us. Um, you know, Chris, that, that, what you, and I, and I understand you've only been here for four months, but what you gave here today seems to be a lot of what we're going to do. C four has been around, I know, since 2018. Um, when it first came up and my God, I don't know how you do with a group of 90 people. I mean, it's just, that's just ridiculous. I mean, it's too many people. That's just 10 short of the United States Senate, uh, trying to get things together and have people meet. Um, so when, when you say the good work that C four has done has helped to reduce those numbers, I'm not really sure how C four has gotten out into the population because some of the people that you're, that you're, that you're targeting through Operation Ceasefire and Operation Inasmuch, you know, opioid addiction goes across all, all, all levels of income, all levels of education, e- everything. It, it's out there and I just didn't see any education earmarked in here. So has anything actually been rolled out to the community on what C four's responsibilities are going to be?
Commissioner Keith, actually, to be more clear, um, because I can see where, when we mentioned 90 individuals, it's actually 90 organizations represented. Some of those are citizens, uh, citizens in recovery, some of those are organizations. But the reason why we have so many people involved is because under the school of government model, we were looking for a community collaboration. And in, and in order to tackle such a huge problem as we were facing, particularly in 2016 and 2017, one of the first things we had to establish was community awareness. And to make sure that everyone was on the same page in a, in, in identifying what the true problem is. We have, um, a problem that, as you said, does span several sectors across our community. And that's why we wanted to make sure that we had a good diversity of agencies and organizations that are part of this effort. Anecdotally, I, I'll just tell you for an example, uh, I was in my office one day, this is last year, and I had a mother to call me. She was frantic and she heard, she had taken her son to a doctor's office for a cer, for another issue. She called the county office because that doctor gave her the, the name C four for her son. Come to find out, her, her son was struggling with addiction. He was ready for treatment. And because she knew about C four, just enough to call the county manager's office, I was able to connect her with a treatment provider who sits on the opioid response team and we were able to facilitate treatment. Again, that's one isolated incident, uh, incident, but are we getting out into, to the community? Not as much as we need to. We can always do more, we always need to do more. That's why it's so important that we keep this effort going. This needs to be a sustained effort. We did not get into this place overnight and we're not going to get out of it overnight. So it's going to take this sustained effort. I understand the wheels of government do tend to, to move slowly. Um, and we are, we are committed to this over the long term. Those lives that Chris talked about, only from 400, over 400 people dying to 250, those are real lives. And we do feel like those lives were saved because of our messaging, because of getting the kits out, because of the organizations that are part of the response team reaching their networks. So it's not just a matter of us reaching, we reach the people in the organizations and then they are able to reach and get the word out to their networks.
Unless, Dwayne, unless I read Chris's slide wrong, that we have gone from 405 deaths in Cumberland County to 287 to 250.
255, yes, sir. I think it was 255.
So, I mean, I appreciate the story of the mom who called, but there's almost a thousand people who have died of opioids since C four had started.
That's right. And it was probably 2,000 before it started. I'm not, I'm.
You're right. Jeanette, would you let me please? I can do this.
I'm mixed.
Okay, I can do this. Dwayne, you and I have had many conversations about this. We sat right in this room almost three years ago talking about this situation. And I asked it then, I said, if county commissioners are not to be involved, then who is? Because right now we can touch everybody and we haven't done anything. But this presentation today seems oddly familiar because I think it was almost verbatim of what we had when, when the young lady came before, talked about what we're going to do. We just haven't, haven't seen anything. It's not negative, it's just frustration that every time you hear, every time a mom goes into the bathroom to find their child overdosed in the, in the bedroom because they just got out of prison and they, and they couldn't wait to get some more opioids in their system and they ended up taking what they got and they got heroin-laced fentanyl. Sir. And that mom has to bury their kid. I just think we need to get moving a little bit faster and that's all I have to say. Thanks. Yes, sir.
Commissioner and counsel.
I was going to suggest that now that they were aware of some of that, that we invite them to come back because our board has to, a report coming up too. So we will need, uh, an update. I hate this. Uh, we need an update, Jim. Uh, taking into consideration all of that because I, I immediately thought of the school system and some of the people are, are not even in the school system.
Right, right. That's, education's a huge point of this.
But I'm interested in another population.
Yes, ma'am.
You cut off the age, at age 44, you deny old folks?
No, ma'am, that's, that's, that was a little bit misleading. That was just the most severely impacted. If you look at the numbers, uh, 25 to 34 and 35 to 44 are just so much more severely impacted than, uh, would be 45 to 54 and then 55 to 64 and then 65 on up.
And when you come back?
Yes, ma'am.
Would you let us know something about the price or just send it to us?
Price, oh, yes, ma'am, price of the naloxone?
Uh, I can't think of the.
Uh, Narcan, Narcan naloxone kits? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one more question.
Yes, sir.
And thank you for being here today.
No problem, I'm, I'm, it's my pleasure.
Um, in talking about this, and I understand that there is an opioid problem, a serious problem with opioid. And I understand that our Attorney General Josh Stein is doing what he, what he's rolling out to try to make sure that we address this issue. But my concern is whenever we started this slide, it says, "Survey of Sustance Abuse." What are you all doing to address other than opioid, other issues dealing with sustance abuse, such as crack cocaine, such as alcoholism, such as marijuana and things of that nature? Is there any other, other effort that you're doing and just addressing opioid?
So at this time, we're just focusing on opioids, but there is a huge need, like cocaine is a, becoming a big problem, uh, psychostimulants. Um, but to answer your question, I think that there's an opportunity for other grant opportunities and other programs to address alcohol, to address, uh, cocaine, to address, uh, methamphetamine. Um, and I believe that if we tried to do it all at once, that it might be too big of a problem for, if just C four how it's created, to try to tackle them all. But I believe that there's an opportunity, um, a huge opportunity and a need to, like you're saying, to address all of these problems. So I don't think it's to where we're ignoring, um, the other substances, but I think it's just because trying to do one thing at a time, maybe not try to fight off more than we can chew. Yes, ma'am, Dr. Green?
I, I was just going to chime in and say, the Health Department is also part of the Cumberland Crisis Collaborative. And so we, um, are part of their work plan and implementing, um, some of their efforts with address some of the other substance abuse issues beyond, uh, C four. So we try, try to make sure that we are being that connector, uh, between C four. I also wanted to mention. I also wanted to mention, Commissioner Piki mentioned about sort of what getting the education out to the public, that resource guide that, uh, Chris mentioned is also part of the education campaign and making sure that resource guide is available. Uh, so that was developed in 2020 and then as well as the media campaign that they implemented in 2020 as well, of getting the educational piece out about opioids in the crisis.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Thank you.
And, Commissioner Adams?
And I guess mine was, is that your question is about the substance abuse is what the grant says. If the grant says opium grant, that, I think that's all you could do up under that grant. Which leads me to my next question is, uh, we did get money in the state of North Carolina through Josh Stein. So are we being proactive in terms of making sure some of that rolls down to Cumberland County? And that's just a question, I'm just putting it out on the table. I think we need to be proactive. Uh, there has been some settlement. highest level, so we ought to be able to get some of that, uh, some of that funding. Thank you.
You're welcome. And thank you, you're correct that that, that grant is just specified for just for opioids.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Keith.
One follow-up.
Yes, sir.
This is a three-year grant. Tell me about the life size, the lifestyle of this grant. Is it, can we apply for it again?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is, is it at the same level? Uh, because we're coming, 2022 will be here before we know it. And that's the end of the grant cycle, so we, can we apply to continue on or it, it's not a one-time grant, right?
No, sir, it's not a one-time grant, but to answer your question about the same level, I don't want to miss, I don't want to misrepresent. Um, I'm not sure if we will get 899, some change again.
Okay. Okay.
Commissioner Keith, that, that, that really is something we would need to research. Uh, the, this grant was specific for implementing certain projects. One of those was a post-overdose recovery team. That's the, that's the Harm Reduction Coalition, those three outreach workers. The other was the fatality review team that he mentioned, as well as money for education and information. Once those are, uh, accomplished within this cycle, if we are to apply for additional funds, I would think we would need to be looking at additional projects.
Yeah, I, I just would hate to see three years' worth of work to apply for a grant again and it, it not be out there. And Chris, one last thing, it, it really shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that heroin is on the increase because anytime you're cutting back, doctors are cutting back opioid subscrib- prescriptions and that, you know, an addict will do whatever an addict needs to do.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 you're, you're right. So I, I think, I wouldn't be surprised if the more you cut back on a, you know, on a, on a drug like heroin, that's a addicted drug, that addicts will get their, their fix somewhere else, whether legal or illegal.
Yes, sir, and that's exactly what happened, that, um, the opioid epidemic started in 1999 and essentially at first was people was addicted to pills and then the people, like you were saying, once they cut in, doctor shop or the pills ran out, eventually graduated to heroin. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And I also have, uh, printed out copies of the action plan that I can give out to you all if you would like, if you would just like to see some of the things that we're doing.
Would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Give it to our clerk.
And thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here. Um, Manager Cannon?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 3B is a presentation by Sally Shutt. Um, this is about the launch of our TV channel on Spectrum Channel 5. Ms. Shutt?
Take my hand, I'm on the spectrum now. We will have a background. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, six months ago, the board approved converting the Fayetteville Cumberland Educational Channel, that's Spectrum Channel 5, to a county government access channel. So now, after installing broadcast equipment and software, as well as hiring two former local television news professionals and adding them to our public information office, our office is now ready to unveil Cumberland County NCTV or CCNCTV. On CCNCTV, you'll see content produced by our PIO, our county departments, Cumberland County Schools, and other local, state, and federal agencies. The public library started creating virtual, uh, during COVID, and this is very well-suited for a government access channel. Your regular commissioners meetings will air live twice a month and will be broadcast the following weeks. We are also adding live coverage of your monthly agenda sessions. The board voted back in December to broadcast your agenda meetings live, and this is the first meeting that we are streaming and recording with new equipment and software that's been installed in this room. During the pandemic, PIO and our information services team have been streaming virtual meetings for several advisory boards. Those include the Board of Health, the Library Board of Trustees, the Board of Elections. And we now offer this content on the channel. We will also air the Houghton Hills Board of Commissioners meetings, which the town produces and will provide to us. So other content you will see will be COVID-19 information from local, state, and federal officials like NCDHHS and the CDC. Those that Jared Thompson has produced is called Where Does Your Trash Go? Better Living Classes from Cooperative Extension and Tasty Tuesday Cooking Classes. So now, let's take a short look at a video that spotlights what you will see on CCNCTV. Lou Cherry and Jared Thompson are our team leads for the channel and their work is on display in this montage.
Watching Cumberland County, North Carolina TV.
We have at the health department administered, uh, 10,500 doses.
Just received my vaccine and I'd like to encourage each of you to get your vaccine also.
Get the vaccine.
If some of these experts, uh, in extension say it, you know, you can take that to the bank.
You're watching Cumberland County, North Carolina TV.
We have at the health department administered, uh, 10,500 doses.
You're watching Cumberland County, North Carolina TV.
We have at the health department administered, uh, 10,500 doses.
Just received my vaccine and I'd like to encourage each of you to get your vaccine also.
Get the vaccine.
If some of these experts, uh, in extension say it, you know, you can take that to the bank.
It's got so many cool features and, um, we just can't wait to get it out on the road.
It's time to take out the trash again, but have you wondered exactly where your trash goes once it's out of your hands?
My name is Rita Grimes and welcome to Cracks Around the House. Today, we'll be talking about making heating rice tastes. Yay!
Don't you boys realize drinking and driving is a bad idea?
Welcome Pamela, we, you are definitely a, a welcome addition to the board.
Now, I'm happy, I'm a happy camper now that I have my first dose of the vaccine and looking forward to the second.
You're watching CCNCTV. So again, that's just a sampling of, um, some of the videos that'll start playing. So our next step after showing and sharing with you some of the content is to softly launch CCNCTV on Spectrum Channel 5 tomorrow afternoon, February 12th. We'll make a formal announcement on Monday, February 15th, including the news that we are now live-streaming your monthly agenda sessions. For the next phase, we are working with the vendor and our information services team on developing the app for live-streaming the channel on the website, um, and then other platforms such as Roku and, and other platforms. I also want to remind you that PIO and information services are working on the redesign of the county's website and will be coming back to you soon with a preview of that. Do you have any questions?
That's nice. I love that the, the video quality is so much better. It really is, it's nice.
Yeah, the things...
Probably the biggest complaints, I think, Glenn, he, the audio was always big. Now, this same thing, same cameras are in the downstairs in the diest? too?
Uh, yeah, we have three cameras in here. And then there are four cameras down in 118.
Yeah, the audio was always the issue downstairs, but, uh, it was really nice.
Um, at this time, are there any more comments or questions? I would like to take the time to, to thank you for your presentation and all that you and your staff are doing in the, um, conversion and development of our TV channel. This is an exciting time for the county and creates new opportunities to provide information to the citizens. In my short time as the chairman, I have gained a greater appreciation to all that Sally Shutt and her staff do for the county. I have seen firsthand the support they provide to the board, the departments, and all county events. On Tuesday, at the governor's press conference, I learned that Sally and her staff have a relationship and are known and respected by the governor's public information staff. Our PIO staff has developed working relationships statewide and I believe represent us well in the community and throughout the state. Thank you for doing a great job. Let's give them a round of applause.
Congress did a pretty good job, too.
But thank you, ma'am.
At the governor's press conference.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Madam?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We'll move to item number four. This includes consideration of, um, our agenda items. 4A is a resolution in support of the Triangle Trails Initiative. Our planning and inspections director, Mr. Ross Howard, will present this item. Come on, Ross, good afternoon.
Thank you, Mrs. Cannon. This is my presentation at the run. Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Uh, so the, um, so as Ms. Cannon said, uh, the item that I'm here to present for you today is just, uh, to get your endorsement, uh, for a resolution of support for the Triangle Trails Initiative. Uh, before I get started, I have a very brief presentation, but before I do get started, I want to recognize Mr. Chuck Flink. He is the gentleman sitting right there in the sweater who, uh, is coming us from Durham. Uh, he is the president and CEO of Greenways Incorporated, uh, is also, has, um, is one that's leading this effort and just, uh, is really the person here who's asking for the support. So the presentation I have for you today is, uh, go back to your, to the, to the header. Um, so Triangle Trails, what is it? So essentially, Triangle Trails is a newly formed organization that's coming into fruition that, uh, is, uh, being incubated underneath the 501(c)(3) organization of, uh, the East Coast Greenways Alliance, which is their umbrella organization. So it's newly forming, they're looking to be able to get funding and support, uh, to separate from that organization at some point and become its own standalone 501(c)(3). So, uh, Chuck has been very diligently going around to all the counties in the area, getting their, uh, support, and so he's come here to Cumberland County for that. So essentially, what Triangle Trails is, is brass tacks, is puts money and resources to the people who fund and plan and build the greenways within their areas. I, I don't know a way to put it any simpler than that. So, um, it's a collaboration between government, business, and institutions and the civic leaders to make the RTP reach a national leader in greenways and trails. So what is the Triangle Trails, what's their boundary? So as you can see by the map here, it's a 14-county region that essentially goes from Virginia with, uh, in the northern extent all the way down to Cumberland County in its furthest southern extent, uh, as you can see here. The whole idea of regional greenway systems and organizations that fund these is not new. So this is something that's been going on for a number of years. If you're looking in the Charlotte Mecklenburg area, you have the Carolina Thread Trail Organization, which does the same thing of what Mr. Flink is proposing. Uh, you have the Piedmont Legacy Trails Organization, which serves a triad, and so of course, this is now coming to the triangle with the same type of organizational mission and framework that you find in these other two organizations. Sorry, can you maybe talk a little bit more to the mic? Okay. So when you look at the Triangle Trails boundary, you can kind of see that we already have a pretty extensive trails network going through this region. So you have everything from the Great Trails State Network, from, uh, which I believe a lot of this data came from NCDOT, uh, you have the East Coast Greenway and the Mountains to Sea Trail. But this is just to give you a broad perspective of, of all the greenways and trail systems that you see, they're currently going through this region and of course, down here in Cumberland County as well, too. Uh, when we talked about the Great Trails State, this is an initiative being put forward by the state of North Carolina to be able to, uh, fund and support greenway networks within the state. But so when you take even a step back further than what you just saw, you can look at it in the, in like the macro of just seeing where all the trail systems are all throughout the state and how they're trying to be able to interlink these trail systems, uh, for a statewide network. So funny, um, essentially, the Triangle Trails is not asking for any funding from the county, so right now they're just asking for a resolution of support because as I said before, they're now just forming and they're trying to get their, um, uh, just trying to get their footing. A lot of the funding, I would say almost all the, uh, all the funding right now is coming from private donors. When you start to look at who these private donors are, you have banks, you have various other interests that have already committed some type of funding to get this thing started. You can see from private, $500,000 coming from private sector funds, uh, a funder pledge of $100,000 made by the RTP Foundation, and a second charter funder pledge coming from the Raleigh Visitors and Conventions Bureau. So we have various bodies that are already starting to contribute this, but it's primarily, 99% of it, I would say, is probably a lot of it's private funding from private interest. So today, they're just asking for you to pass a resolution of support to be able to get, uh, to just include with all the others that have, uh, already committed their support to these, to this effort. Uh, the copy of this resolution should be in your materials, I believe, that are part of your agenda. When you look at all the other counties that have already passed those types of resolutions, you can see that more counties currently in committee, they're anticipating that they're going to pass it, but everybody in red has already passed their resolutions of support. And so we're pretty much the last, you know, like body to do this. So, um, anyway, so that's why we're here with you today. So what we're asking for you to do is to essentially put this on the consent agenda for the February 15th regular review, if you so think fit for that to happen.
Thank you so much, sir. Are there any questions or comments?
One quick question.
Yes, Commissioner Keith.
How does this work in with our existing trails like the Cape Giraffe River Trail and, and those things?
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Flink to come up here and explain.
Because I, I noticed that a lot of documentation says you're, you'll be part of the planning, developing, and that, so I don't want to take away from the city or the parks and residents if they're already a problem.
We're, uh, that, we are putting all of those trails as part of the regional effort. So that's where we get our source material from, is from Cumberland County, from the city of Fayetteville. They're all participants in contributing the data for those maps, uh, the, the map that we have. So it's all part of this regional. So what we're trying to do is collect all the counties and municipalities that have trails and greenways, bring it together in a regional construct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any more questions or comments? Is there a motion to move this to February 15? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you. Thank you.
Item 4B, Mr. Chairman, is consideration of a funding agreement with Kingdom Community Development Corporation. We have our community development director, Ms. Dee Taylor, with us. Good afternoon, Dee.
We have our community development director, Ms. Dee Taylor, with us. Good afternoon, Dee.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon, welcome.
So in the early part of last year, Community Development issued a request for proposal to solicit agencies to develop affordable housing that would target potential home buyers and renters that are low to moderate income. And so at the same time, Community Development also designated a portion of its Home Investment Partnership Program funds to target community housing development organizations as required by HUD. So a CHODO, Community Housing Development Organization, or CHODO, is defined by HUD as a nonprofit, community-based organization that basically has the staff and capacity to carry out affordable housing activities. And so Kingdom Community Development was just one of those agencies that was selected, mainly because it is our CHODO for our community and also a certified HUD housing counseling agency. And so the contract that you do have before you is with Kingdom Community Development Corporation to use community development funds for the acquisition of land that is currently owned by the town of Spring Lake and to also conduct clearance activities as well as install infrastructure and make improvements to develop affordable housing project that will consist of 15 single-family homes with three bedrooms, two baths in that area. And so in the subsequent phases following this Phase 1, Community Development will use its funds to develop the housing units that would target the low to moderate income households. And Kingdom Community Development will also use its funds and resources to help leverage the cost of this project. And so other than meeting the CHODO requirements, Community Development did choose this project too because it does meet its goals and objectives that are outlined in the five-year consolidated plan that was prepared by Community Development. And one of those goals is to promote homeownership opportunities for the low to moderate income households and to expand the housing inventory, especially for new construction, that would target the home buyers and renters that are low to moderate income. And so Community Development do have funds available to support this activity. And we're asking the board to place this item on the agenda for the next board, February 15th Board Commissioners Meeting and approve the agreement with Kingdom Community Development in the amount not to exceed $204,732. And so I will, we have to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Adams.
I don't think about having questions. I was going to move to approve the funding agreement with Kingdom Community.
These Taylor plans and all of that, and there is some discussion of Alliance expanding and Orange County possibly coming in to Alliance. So I think Dwayne and I talked about it away from Alliance. Is that, there aren't so many seats on this board. Two of ours are not filled, we need to move toward filling them so they don't try to say, give Orange County one of our seats. And I think in the last meeting, we kind of put that at bay a little bit because there's one extra seat that they're talking about possibly giving to Orange County. So that takes us to where we are with the two seats that are done. The way Alliance is, you can do three terms on Alliance's board. Ours though, for our board, you can only do two terms. You can do a term and then we reappoint it. I was bringing to this board... That appointment and reappoint Lotus to that one seat and then ask the commissioners if you have anybody that you think would be available for that second seat to get it to Dwayne and I so we can get that up to Alliance. So that would be my request today.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Council.
Do the other counties, how many commissioners do they have on their, on this board?
Dwayne, can it?
There's only one, one per county commissioner, only one per county.
The commissioners, only one commissioner. But some of the other counties have more seats than we have.
Yes, yes.
They have more seats than we have. We got four seats.
Yeah, okay.
Durham and Wake have more seats than we have. And so that was one of the things that, I don't want to give up one of our four.
No.
You know, and it may be, it may end up being that other counties come to...
Whenever we had mental health in the county, and I think she'd be a strong person and a good addition to this board. So...
Are there any other nominations?
And I'm not asking to do the second one today, that second position, just the one, we have to change, we have to waive our rule to be able to, for Lotus to be appointed.
And I made the motion right. I moved that we waive the rules and appoint Lotus Cross.
Right. And what happens is, they've already been heard, so they, that's not a problem. And I think that is...
Or any Alliance board member?
Well, I guess, you know, I think we may need to have some discussion on that. I think this is just a unique situation. I would hate to waive it and, because we do have that rule for all the rest of them. I think we're just in a unique situation in terms of the changes that's going on with mental health throughout the state. And I think it's imperative that we have somebody that's already versed in that to stay on this board.
Okay.
You know, Jim, I think that's something we can talk about, that's something.
Attorney Moorefield.
It's fine. I mean, this would be, your plan is to a third waiving, the two-term requirement to appoint for a third term consistent with Alliance's rules.
That's right, okay. So, so the motion has been made for Ms. Lotus Golds. For the waiver to be done to appoint Ms. Costa to the position, correct?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Item?
Thank you.
Item 4D is the Cape Fear Valley Health System Board of Trustees vacancies. Commissioner Adams also submitted this item as well.
Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you. And as you're aware, we sat on the hospital board and the names came to the hospital board. We meet again in the, end of February. And so it was important to bring it to this agenda session and make the nominations so that we can vote on it at our next board meeting. We could have done a nominating vote, but I think it was probably better to bring it here so we could have some discussion. So to give you some update that I just got when I was getting out the car, walking in, is Mike Nagowski sent me a, because I think Commissioner Booth might have asked a question, which was a good question. So they went back and looked at the bylaws. We did change the bylaws at the Cape Fear Valley Board of Trustees. I think you asked a question when we were on the nominating committee. You can be employed with the, with Cape Fear Valley and be on the board, but only the chief of staff and assistant chief of staff, so not a board member. So it, so the ones that, and I can read it to you just, because he just, yeah, it's the chief or the vice chief. Those are the only, because they come, I guess they're nominated by the doctors. And so the bylaws was not extended to anybody who was employed with them except for if they were chief or vice chief. So that kind of knocked out Dr. Sawyer and Dr. Horwitz because they were both, they're both employed by Cape Fear Valley. And so the nomination that came from the Board of Trustees of Cape Fear Valley was Dr. Jones and Dr. Strickland. And so I would nominate Dr. Strickland and Dr. Jones for that appointment. And then, so let's do that part first. So that was, that was the first part. And I don't know if anybody else has any nominations for the doctor positions.
Are there any questions or comments?
Second his motion, for Michael Jones and Myron Strickland.
We just nominated, yeah, we just nominated today, thank you. And so then, Mr. Chairman, that brings us to the late position, which is the one that at the Hospital Board of Trustees, the nominating committee did not make a recommendation and the board did not make a recommendation because it was the belief that that was strictly this board's ability to make it, well, all of the board's ability, but we got input on the doctors. But this one is just whatever the board deems that they want to do. And so this is the nomination for the...
So you want us to do nominations for the position that the county commissioners could appoint?
Yeah.
Okay.
Chair, I have a nomination. My nomination is Marshall Fairclaw.
Are there any other nominations? Yes, Commissioner King.
I nominate Jason Cool.
Are there any other nominations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you board for both of those items.
So those nominations will be presented to us at our 15th meeting for a vote.
Yes, sir.
For appointment, we just did the nomination.
Item me.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I guess you asked whether we vote.
We do need to take a vote.
Well, we never vote to nominate, so I don't understand, I mean, we never vote to nominate, we only vote on appointments.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Item 4, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay.
Is the formal bid award for the electronic health record system for the Cumberland County Public Health Department. Mr. Dwayne Holder, our deputy county manager, will provide some information.
Welcome again, Mr. Holder.
Thank you, sir. I have copies of this presentation being passed out. So the next argument is the approval or consideration for a formal bid award for an electronic health record system for the Cumberland County Department of Public Health. The current EHR system being utilized by the health department is obsolete.
Find that picture. Yeah, find that picture.
Did that for...
It made the point.
Okay. Vendor is known for supporting upgrades. The current system creates significant inefficiencies in the delivery of critical public health services. The current system was implemented in 2014 and there's, there's some sentiment amongst the majority of the staff that remained from that time that there was a lack of staff engagement in that selection process. County Information Services and Health Department staff began planning for the procurement of a new EHR system in the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 budget cycle. During the third quarter of calendar year 2018, IS staff initiated communication with representatives from Epic EHR, Epic EHR and Cape Fear Valley Health, in order to begin the due diligence process to determine whether or not Epic was a viable option for the health department. Discussions continued into the first quarter of 2019, calendar year 2019, when the county issued a request for proposals for the procurement of a new system. An RFP was sent to Epic and the county was advised that rather than respond to the RFP, Epic advised the county to seek extension of Cape Fear Valley's system for utilization of their Community Connect portal. The Community Connect portal allows for affiliated hospitals, clinics, and physicians to connect to the main Epic system. Cape Fear Valley, but no, Cape Fear Valley did not actually go live on the Epic system until May of 2019. Although Epic chose not to respond to the county's RFP, the county did receive six responsive bids, but only three of the bids at that time had a presence in North Carolina. That was Cure &amp; D, Patagonia, and Netsmart. IS staff worked in conjunction with health department staff to evaluate the responses and fully vet the responses through a defined software solution process. That occurred between the fourth quarter of 2019 and the first quarter of 2020. By January 2020, county staff were able to secure a general overview demonstration of the Epic system from, and worked along with Cape Fear Valley representatives in that effort, albeit the county was unable to secure a comprehensive demonstration of how the system would meet the needs of the health department. Pretty brief. Did not provide the detail that the other vendors provided. Therefore, county IS staff sought to obtain responses from Epic on the county's functional requirements, the software governance structure, and a pricing structure. That took place between February and June of 2020. Then in late June, county staff were notified that responses to our requests could not be obtained without a non-disclosure agreement. And we did consult the county attorney on that non-disclosure agreement and because it was a public, would be a public purchase, we were advised that we could not complete a non-disclosure agreement per that request. At this time, management does feel confident that our IS staff and our health department have worked diligently in their attempts to try to evaluate all EHR software solutions. We did try to fully vet the Epic system because we realized that there are some mutual relationships between the patients that exist between, between some of the patients, between the hospital and the health department. I will say that some of the thinking about being on the same platform are not as relevant in today's world as they were a few years ago because of the implementation of the Health Information Exchange, which, which really standardizes all of your electronic patient data in a way that systems can speak pretty seamlessly and be integrated between... patient data in a way that systems can speak pretty seamlessly and be integrated between platforms. So given that management is... that we select the CureMD system. The CureMD EHR system is the most widely used EHR among the state of North Carolina's county public health departments. And I do have a brief, just a brief video, Forsyth County selected the CureMD system, and I wanted to just share the video of their implementation.
Hi, I'm Quintana Stewart. I'm Assistant Health Director here at Forsyth County Department of Public Health. So one of the things that I really like about the CureMD software is that their provider notes were really built to align with the reporting structures and requirements for North Carolina Department of Public Health programs. So that really made our duties and our, you know, clinic flow in the public health department very easy and simple. You know, CureMD worked closely with the state and they developed a product that makes our reporting and capturing the data really simple. Reporting with CureMD is another, you know, no brainer. Again, because CureMD works so closely with state public health, you know, all of our things are set up and CureMD will talk firsthand with the state to make sure that, you know, we're building the notes and we're able to capture that required data that we have to submit, you know, in a timely fashion. If we run into a hiccup and we can't figure out how to generate the report on our own, again, that support staff, they're right there and they work with us. We put in a ticket and they either walk us through and show us how to get that report or they generate the report for us, you know. So reporting has been great. So I think best practice if you're going to implement a new EMR in your local health department, I will follow the model we used with CureMD. CureMD was very instrumental in helping us find another county health department that was using the system. They kind of coordinated and allowed us to go out and do a site visit, see the actual application in use. They were very patient, making sure we gathered all of our information, you know, that they needed to figure out the needs of our local health department. They came out and did multiple demonstrations to make sure staff questions were answered and they felt comfortable with the system. So one, I think going out and seeing the application in use was very helpful and CureMD helped with that. And then just answering staff questions, you know, that also helped out. So we had a lot of staff buy-in. So when it came time for actual implementation, staff were on board. They were willing participants, they felt like they also made this choice, not management, you know, made the choice for them. So it was just great. I would absolutely recommend CureMD to any of our local health department partners or anybody. I mean, it is a very user-friendly system. You can't beat the cost, you know. One of the things I do is oversee finance, so I've seen drastic savings and a better product. So I, yes, I would absolutely recommend CureMD.
So we are asking that this item be placed on the February 15th Board of Commissioners' consent agenda, and we do have our public health director and IS project manager on hand. They were, they really headed up the procurement effort, and so if there are any other detailed questions, I'm sure they can answer.
Are there any questions or discussions?
I will make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Keith.
Should we be asking questions on a motion or what?
You can do it either way you want, however you'd like. Or have the chairman.
Mr. Attorney.
Well, you can always have a discussion as this, as this we said before the annual oral discussion, but I think this council's request of that emotion before the discussion question.
Sorry, excuse me.
Whoever you recognize.
Let's go with...
Go on, Jim, and get the legal...
This...
Well, I have to, wait, that was a heck of a sales presentation. Uh, thank you. But to say that you really were able to look, evaluate Epic, by your own admission, you did, you could only get so far.
Correct.
Okay. And as I understand, the idea of a non-disclosure agreement is sort of bogged down with some semantic wording about, between the legal groups. So, and my only concern throughout this whole thing has been, we all are on the hospital system. Epic is becoming widely used in hospital systems, and I'm not sure Forsyth County, if their major hospital system, which I believe is a private hospital up there in Winston-Salem, uses, uses that same thing. But alls we heard about as trustees of Cape Fear Valley is many times people present themselves to the emergency room, and because they don't have records or they don't have the things, that the hospital has to take time and to run a litany of tests just to ensure that they're protected and that person has it. Whereas if they were together on this, on the same system, I think you would do that. I accept your, your, your idea that by state legislature, that everyone has to be able to communicate with everyone, but at the same time, one platform is always better than trying to, it, it's like having two languages so a translator sometime, but having one. But I, I guess what frustrates me a little about this is, we've been talking about the idea of the, the public health department coming under Epic, you know, just in discussion for a couple of years now, and it really didn't go before the board of the health departments, that they didn't know. And then it just sort of showed up and, you know, I would have loved to have seen a presentation from somebody who's on Epic that says how great it is. But I, you know, I think we're, we're, we're only getting one side of the story on that. But that was my only comment. I have an idea where, where this is going to go, but I just, I think it's rushing.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Keith, I hear you, but I would tell you that, and my daughter, she, she was at UNC Chapel Hill, and they were on Epic for a long time and Cape Fear Valley wasn't. Cape Fear Valley was on Cerner and they could still talk. I mean, it's, it's, I don't think it, it does anything. And I think that the problem we have is, one, the health department can't afford Epic by itself. I mean, it's just, you know, the hospital could barely afford it.
But we don't know what it is. We don't know the cost.
Well, we know the cost from when the hospital did it in terms of what they were getting, getting ready to charge and getting charged from Epic.
But that's...
But...
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I mean, it was just an expensive proposition. The, the other thing that we, we do know, just by information purposes, is that we did not necessarily, I'm sitting here now as my county commissioner had and not the hospital had. So we remember or had some, we've had that discussion that Southeastern had Epic but under another hospital, and it was a nightmare for Southeastern in terms of, remember that? They, they were with either Novartis or Atrium, and Atrium controlled it and controlled what Southeastern could do. And so I don't know, as a county commissioner, I don't want to give anybody that much authority over the health department when they have to make a decision about what they're doing with their equipment. I think that's, that gives me as much concern as anything else because they will not control that platform. This one, they will control the platform themselves, they'll be able to do it and be able to talk to any one of the other hospitals that's around. So I, I, I don't, you know, not go with Epic does not in terms of the cost and all of that. And, you know, I think that's why Epic, I think I saw on the presentation, Epic said you need to go talk to one of the partners, because I think Epic knew that we probably couldn't afford Epic, because that's the one that said go talk to Cape Fear Valley. But I don't think we want to give up that kind of authority from the health department, from the county, over to the hospital.
Are there any more questions or comments? There's a motion on the floor to approve, is there a second?
She didn't make it.
She didn't make it? Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Council.
I thought I did too.
I thought you did too, and I was going to say...
That was the question.
We followed the recommendation from the health director and our chief.
Is there a second? There's a second, and is there all in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Ryan Pastor, Council, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Adams, and Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you all.
Voting opposition, Commissioner...
And one opposed, Commissioner Keith. So that passes, it moved to our February 15th meeting.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, just, and to the board member, just as a note, since it did not move forward unanimously, that will be an item of business on your February 15th agenda as opposed to under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir.
Item F.
Yes, sir. Item F is a consideration of the diversity, equity and inclusion DEI Executive Steering Committee Alternative Holiday Schedule Recommendation. Our deputy manager will be presenting this item.
We're preparing a short presentation for this. I did pass around a copy of that presentation. Just, I know we do have a new member on our board and for the viewing public as well. Just for purposes of review, I want to take a brief moment to provide a recap for how we arrived at this particular agenda item. Well, it seems like it was an eternity ago, it was just last spring, that our nation did experience several high-profile racially-charged deaths that were followed by protests and marches. Those occurred globally, nationally and unfortunately here in our community. Response, in response to that, this board did adopt a resolution against racial injustice. The resolution, among other things, called for the creation of a Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Committee. And thus, the Cumberland County Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Staff Advisor Committee was born. The charge of this 22-member staff advisor committee is to develop recommendations, procedures and a strategic plan outlining goals to advance diversity, equity and inclusion within the organization while focusing on the areas of staff recruitment, training, internal operations and community outreach. During the board's August 13th, 2020, agenda session, Commissioner Keith introduced a proposed county policy on religious and celebratory holidays. The purpose of that policy proposal was to be more inclusive and to better allow staff to prioritize their individual days of observance. While not an exhaustive list, I've captured here on the screen some of those holidays and/or days of observance that were, that are not currently included in our current holiday schedule, but that Commissioner Keith did include in his proposal. I'm sure from this slide that you see that acknowledgement of these holidays would have create increased inclusiveness for our workforce. And as a result of that presentation, this board by unanimous vote voted to send that policy proposal to the new DEI committee. The committee received its charge in September of 2020 and approached their work very thoughtfully and diligently through the month of November. I want to recognize Ms. Brenda Jackson and Ms. Vicki Evans, who currently serve as the co-conveners of that committee, and they had their work cut out for them, but they engaged in very good and thoughtful work. Although the task was very daunting to be an initial project for this group, they performed with great effort. In December, the committee reached a consensus to forward two policy options for consideration to the DEI Executive Steering Committee. Keep in mind that the steering committee receives recommending, the recommendations from the advisory committee for recommendation to you as a board. And that executive steering committee is inclusive of county management as well as the co-conveners. So those options are included in your packet, they're also listed here on the screen. You can read those. The first one is to keep the current holiday schedule, but change the name of religious holidays, and either one of the two, add a floating day or take away Good Friday, add a floating day. And the second option was to maintain 12-page county holidays, which is our current schedule, and have 10 static and two floating. I will say that the DEI committee, because of the charge from the board of commissioners, did feel like it was important to consider a change to the schedule, but they did make these two recommendations to the executive steering committee. Now, based on the discussion that we heard as an executive steering committee, based on the discussion that the co-conveners brought back to us, as well as the documentation, and you've got the review of some of the discussion in your packet, the executive steering committee offers this as a policy recommendation to the board of commissioners. It is to keep the current holiday schedule of 12 approved holidays and add one floating day to allow individual employees to recognize the observance of a day of their choosing. And you can see, we feel like it does provide for increased flexibility and inclusiveness lines with state holidays, which obviously several of our services are dependent upon the operation of state offices. And again, this was based on clear discussion and recommendation. And at this time, I'll undertake any questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner Keith.
Are all members of the Diversity and Equity Inclusion Council, county employees?
Yes, sir.
Does it not, there was never the intention to increase, I mean, how could you not think that they want to increase the number of paid holidays? It was never the intention, it was to be more inclusive about the days that we charge them with taking. So for a, a group of county employees to make a recommendation to get one more day off of vacation to celebrate, I think it's disingenuous. It really is. I'm frustrated because it wasn't the intention. It was intended to be more inclusive and not take advantage of the situation.
Commissioner Keith, in, in defense of the committee, the committee did not just merely recommend adding another day.
That's what it came up to.
Well, that, that would be the steering committee. So that would be county management as well as our two co-conveners. But what we based that on was on the recommendations from the committee. So the actual committee, we felt it important for transparency and for the integrity of this process for you to see what they recommend.
But once again, the idea that we're thinking about the staff more than the citizens, one of the ideas that we had when it came through here was we would be able to offer these days, that some of these days still be able to be used as county days, a functioning day so citizens could use these days too. That was totally missed in the whole presentation.
Hold on a minute, I don't understand, I, I gotta get you...
Commissioner Adams.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying, because what you're saying, I don't think lines up with what they're saying, I guess, is that I would be able to, as an employee, I get an extra day, but I would be able to take my day, you know, if I wanted to do Juneteenth or Columbus Day or whatever day, but the government still runs because everybody's not going to take the day that I take. So it's not like the, so the county government's not closing down.
I understand that completely.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, okay.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, we just, basically what I'm saying is, and we'll keep every, we'll keep all our holidays that we have now, and we're just going to add one so you can take it off whenever you want.
Or, or one of the holidays. You gotta, I think it's got to be linked to a holiday.
But...
Whatever your holiday is, I don't, I'm not trying to debate with them, but, I mean...
It's surprising, it's just not surprising. It's not the intent of what, it's not the intent of what the idea was to bring it forward. But you gotta just say, okay, well, we're going to keep all the same holidays we had before, but we're going to give you an extra one. It costs account, it costs money, and it's taken away from citizens.
Commissioner Stewart.
Please inform me of the intent.
The intent was that we would be more inclusive. Right now, this federal holiday, the federal programs have certain holidays that are used, the state has certain holidays that are used. There's, we're taking up to three holidays, four days of holidays that are truly religious in, in, in why we're taking them. in man, in, in why we're taking them, but they're only religious in one aspect, they don't take into consideration maybe Judaism, or Islam, or some of the other ones, so therefore we are forcing citizens that who may not be of that faith to take holidays where they can't take their own holidays, of what's important to them. We also allow them to take other holidays that may be important to them, or if their husbands or wives work for the federal government, they would have the option of taking maybe that same day that their husband or wife could take. Right now, the federal government and the state government have a number of different holidays that are not recognized by each other, they're recognized separately.
And if I can add to Commissioner Keith's proposal, for your background, Commissioner Keith, and I think part of what you're trying to get across, you, your proposal was to keep eight static holidays, meaning that instead of being closed for twelve days, this is where the public access comes in, instead of the county government being closed for twelve days, instead, we would only be closed for eight days, and then, he was proposing four floating holidays for employees to utilize however they choose, but that the county offices would be open those four additional days. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this was in response to the consideration of Juneteenth being a holiday, so in order to be more equitable about it, more fair about it for everyone, that's when this proposal was made. Yes, Commissioner Adams.
And I guess I would ask management, either way, because I'm trying to figure out whether it's a logistic nightmare with all the employees we got, that they all take these four floating days whenever they take them, as opposed to keeping the ones we have and adding the other one, I mean, I just, for finance and everything else, or department heads.
I think that was, Commissioner Adams brings up a good point, just so the board knows, we did not, Mr. Holder, no member of management participates on the DEI committee, that's why we have the two co-conveners, but they spent, they labored over this issue over several meetings, and one of the things that really got them bogged down was, they tried to operationalize this, because we had some department heads that are a member of the DEI committee, Dr. Green is one of those, and so, operationalizing this from their perspective was, how do you manage it? And so, we asked them to narrow it down, to try not to operationalize it, and to bring back some scenarios for the executive steering committee to consider. I think the holidays that were.
Those are the two that they recommended.
Yes.
Oh, yes, Commissioner Keith.
You know, I could have, I could have understood that, that thought process, but the fact of the matter is, many of our departments have been operating virtually without public access for the last nine months, and where they could still call in, and that it doesn't necessarily mean that they would have to be open to the public on those days, but still be staffed to where they could access and help out citizens. But we've been operating virtually on almost every one of these departments, not having access to the public, so that, to put it into that same, it's, it's just a lateral move.
So, to, to respond to that, Commissioner Keith, I don't think it's so much about being open, I think the concern is that you have twenty-two hundred employees and a very large number are very accustomed to having the Thursday, the Friday after Thanksgiving. Most people were, are accustomed to having Christmas Eve off, and then also the Good Friday holiday, and I think the thought process was, how do you manage that with so many employees that are accustomed to that? I think it also came up, maybe just from the executive steering committee, not DEI, about this being a deterrent to our recruitment tool. Most other counties follow the state holidays, and so we already have a challenge in recruiting, and so we, there was a concern from the executive steering committee about taking away three holidays from the state schedule that most other holiday, counties follow.
But listen, they, they could keep the same holiday, they could keep the same holidays, if they choose to keep those same holidays, nothing would have changed, that could have been their floating holidays.
But everybody can't have the same day off, I mean, we have twenty-two hundred employees, if we're going to be open to the public, we have to have enough people to open the doors and serve the employees, everybody can't have the day off. I know that, and that the tax office did a survey, that we have representatives from most every county department, the tax office representatives did a survey, and I believe, and Ms. Jackson, Ms. Evans, you correct me, but those employees expressed a desire not to have any changes, the tax office, that's their busiest time of the year, from December one through the first or second week of January, they can't take any leave, because that's when we receive the bulk of our tax dollars, and taking away a holiday at Thanksgiving and then a holiday at Christmas, I mean, those were kind of the considerations, they put a lot of time and effort into this.
Commissioner Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, I know that there are lots of times that we have committees, and we don't agree with what the committees come up with, but it's unusual for a diversity committee, okay, for us not to agree with the first task that they have. So, I don't think, listening to the discussion, that we're going to come up with a unanimous vote, so I move that we accept this recommendation, that we accept this recommendation.
I'll, I'll second that, but I have a comment also.
Uh, a second with a comment, yes, sir.
I agree with what Dr. Counsel just said, this whole diversity issue that we all talk about and we're all concerned about, and then we get a chance to get a professional group and a dedicated group together, and we allow them to form a committee. These professionals get together, and certainly if these are their recommendations coming from advisory groups, and they're making these recommendations, personally, I feel it's very difficult for me to vote against what somebody else has voted for. If we're going to micromanage everything that we've heard here today, I thought we were here to support people, I thought we were here to encourage people, I didn't know we were here to find fault with so many things. I personally believe in trying to catch people doing something right, and I believe in this situation, we've caught people doing something right, that's my second.
Mr. Chairman, may I clarify something, I just wanted to make sure, we are still only going to be closed the twelve holidays, the county will only be closed the twelve state holidays, the floating holiday, we will still be open, each employee will get to select one additional holiday at their choosing.
Okay, let's call for the board, all in favor?
Voting in favor.
We have this discussion on the motion.
He wants discussion on the motion.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'll direct this to Mr. Lancaster, Mr. Lancaster, although I appreciate your comments, this was brought up, this was brought up to the, to the board to look at with the intention of being more inclusive to the board for a number of different things, this does not have to do with diversity of only race, but it has to do, it also included gender, it included religious preference, it included social issues, and many other things, so to go in to say, at a cost of giving an extra day to the county, I think what I try to look out for is not only the county, and try to be more inclusive, but also the citizens who, who prefer to have services, because that is, the job of county government is to serve the citizens of the community, and I don't appreciate the, your, your response on that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Pardon me, Jimmy, I wouldn't expect anything up from you, thank you.
Okay, okay, let's stop, let's stop it right now, let's.
Start that.
Is the, um, the vote is, the vote, the vote, excuse me, excuse me, please, the, the vote, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Madam Court.
Can we vote?
Commissioner Lancaster?
What?
We vote, we vote.
Commissioner Counsel, Chairman Evans, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Stewart, voting in opposition, Commissioner Keith.
Thank you, commissioners. At this time, at this time, I believe that we are in need of a break, and I would like to recess for five minutes if possible, please.
A break.
All in favor?
You got the power.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we'll move to item four G, this is reconsideration of the joint resolution of the Board of Commissioners and the City Council, where there was a request to the delegation to sponsor a local bill to amend the session law authorizing prepared food and beverage tax, and also to modify the distribution of proceeds of the sale of alcoholic beverages in Cumberland County. And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to provide a little bit of background information, as the board knows, on January twenty-first, the Board of Commissioners held a special meeting with our legislative delegation to discuss this item and other potential legislative changes. The delegation at that meeting advised the board at the most, that a referendum would likely be required to move this legislation successfully through the General Assembly. This was new information regarding a referendum, and that requirement creates significant risk to the county and the extension of the tax. The proposed language for the session law allows the sharing of ABC revenue with the city of Bevel, Spring Lake, and Hope Mills, however, that language does not address a referendum requirement. The currently approved resolution and the proposed language provides that the county would begin sharing ABC revenue immediately without the results of a referendum. This creates a potential loss of nine million dollars in total to the county, three million plus of ABC revenue, and six million of food and beverage revenue if there is a failed referendum. The Food and Beverage Work Group that consists of Chairman Evans, Vice Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Keith, met with staff twice since the January twenty-first delegation meeting to discuss this new information and to discuss how we should proceed forward. The work group believes there's a significant risk of losing the food and beverage tax in our community if the repeal is tied to a referendum, therefore, they are recommending the board rescind the joint resolution with, between the City Council and the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. Since meeting with the work group, staff met with the county's bond council, and after discussion with the bond council, staff does not recommend pursuing any further legislative changes. As you know, debt was incurred for the Crown complex, multiple facilities make up the Crown complex, they include the Coliseum, the Agri Expo, the arena, and the theater. The plan is to demolish the theater and construct a replacement facility, location unknown this time, which is an original facility of that Crown complex. Food and beverage funds may only be used to replace, modify, or maintain the Crown complex facilities, as long as there's debt outstanding on the Crown complex for the purposes just mentioned, the repeal provision does not apply. The recommendation today is to consider moving the, following recommendation to the February fifteenth Board of Commissioners meeting as a consent item, and that is to rescind the joint resolution between the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners and the Bevel City Council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Manager, is there any questions or comments?
I just have one comment.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, that as the manager was speaking, is, was not to go forth with anything with the delegation, isn't that what I heard?
Yes, sir.
So that we understand that that means that if we were to build a performing arts day, it would have to be on that footprint, so, but if you don't change, because the footprint doesn't change, if you don't have, unless it's something different, it has to be built out on that foot, so that we all know what, you know.
Mr., may I, in discussions, I'm sorry.
It's Madam Manager.
In discussions with bond council. Um, again, let's go back, so there's an important distinction here that we discussed with bond council, the Crown complex, bonds were issued for the Crown complex, we already had an existing theater, that theater is a part of the Crown complex, the food and beverage proceeds can be used to replace a facility of the Crown complex, modify or maintain. The language of the original bill does not specify the geography of a replaced facility.
Wait a minute, but, okay, and I'm not going to argue with bond council, it may not talk about, but when they did the tax, what did the tax say? I mean, I understand all, you know, and this is new information because, and haven't seen it, but we were always led to believe that the proceeds had to be on that complex, and what happened is, years ago, the complex wasn't a complex, so, so I hope bond council went back, because what happened is, and we remember when we were talking about the ADA stuff, the only reason we had this ADA problem is because we made it a complex, changed the name of it, and because of that, we had to do the ADA for the theater and the arena to come down to, to encompass the, the complex.
So, so it's my understanding from bond council that the bond documents speak to the Crown complex, and the Crown, when the bonds were issued, and so, a part of the complex, the complex includes all of those facilities.
Well, I guess, I understand, I'm not talking about the bonds though, it's what pays for the bonds, I, I, I probably agree with counsel that with the bonds, you can put it anywhere, but as to these proceeds, when that statute was enacted, what did the, what did it say that you, where you could pay the proceeds off that? It's not about the bonds, you can continue to issue debt, but the question is, that's a separate thing from the tax, because the tax is what pays the bonds.
Right.
So you can do the bonds, but where about, what about the money from the tax? That's where I am, I'm back one step farther than the bond.
Right, and so, bond council, I guess the, the changing moment here was her understanding that we are demolishing one of those original facilities of the complex, and then we're replacing it, and the language allows you to use those funds to replace it, but that language.
What of the bond, or the, or the, or the, or the revenues, the revenue or the bonds?
The revenue.
So the, the tax?
Yes, and written, this, I'm in, I'm waiting in the legal water here that I'm out of my lane.
I'm just trying to get an understanding.
Right.
As, 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 as the county manager's explained, the real.
Rick, can you go to the mic, please?
And as you wanted, can we get this in writing as an opinion of this council, I mean of this bond council, not just a conversation and a telephone?
I, I think she would do that, I mean, certainly, we'd concurs that, but I think the, she went back to the, the original sixty-five act and traced it. traced it forward in terms of the buildings.
The 65 Act, which one?
The, the original 1965 Act creating the auditorium, the Cumberland County Auditorium. Commission, that's.
The commission?
Yeah, well, we, the precursor to the Civic Center Commission, because you got to recall the proceeds of this.
65, wow.
The proceeds of the food and beverage tax by the statute are paid over, you know, for the benefit of the, of the Civic Center Commission now, for the, all the things that are associated with maintaining and operating the, uh, the complex. Bond council, and, and we had a long discussion, but her opinion, based on going back and, and kind of mudding out what was there at each stage, there's been a different statute, is the opinion that we can replace any one of these buildings, and it isn't, and as long as we're, you know, really replacing, we're not just building a new building, but that we can replace any one of these original, uh, facilities anywhere.
And, and Commissioner Keith?
I'm good.
Lynn, you?
I'm good. Okay.
That's what bond council.
That's probably fair.
To, to get down deep, deep into the, the question of this, and I think this is your only way to go, the risk is not worth the reward of a referendum. So I, I, I am supporting this. But is it, in your opinion, Rick, of the bond council's interpretation, is it any facility that is under the management of the Crown or under the Crown, regardless of where it is located?
Yes, it would, and we, and we'd never propose anything but keeping all, just still under the auspices of the Commission.
But, but if we want to do it out there on I-95 somewhere, as long as it was underneath the management of the Crown, we're good. All right, thank you very much.
And, and she, or the bond council is who we have to allow to be able to, to move these finances. So that's the opinion of the council.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Are there any more questions or comments?
So do you need a motion, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir, please.
And a ma, and a motion is to rescind the resolution, um, with the City of Fayetteville on, um, the food and beverage tax and ABC distribution?
Yes, sir.
And, and just, just not submit anything further to the, to the.
And, and, and not submit any changes to the State delegation.
Is there a second, Commissioner Council? All in favor?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Item 4H is the fiscal year 2021 audit contract with Elliot Davis, and I'll ask our Finance Director, Vicky Evans, to present this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Evans, how are you?
Doing good. Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So every year, we have to get approval of the fiscal year, um, in process, the audit contract. And so today, we're quest, we are requesting approval of the fiscal year 2021 audit contract with Elliot Davis. This will be their second year of, um, completing our audit after we conducted an RFP process last year and selected that, and you approved the selection of that, um, audit firm to conduct our audit. There, um, in my memo, I had a two-part, um, request. One of those requests has been, um, already approved. Um, it's my understanding that Chairman Evans has appointed Commissioner Keith as the, uh, the chairman of the Audit Committee, and so that's been handled. So just asking, um, today that, um, on Monday's meeting, we can move this forward on the consent agenda, requesting approval of the audit contract and the engagement letter.
Yes, I got it.
Second.
I've just got one question. All right.
Yes, Commissioner, um, Adams.
Forgot my name?
Yeah.
You never forgot my name? Um, I just have the one question. And we had the old audit firm, and now we've got the new audit firm. We just sent, sat here and talked about the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. The old firm had in there that they would use some minority participation, but they don't have that in there. Uh, I think we ought to at least raise the issue with them of some minority participation, um, in terms of this audit stuff, if we're going to talk about, we're really going to be about diversity, equity, and inclusion. That ought to be a part, the last firm didn't have an issue with that, I don't think that they should, but I think it ought to be included in our proposal for them.
And I would, Jimmy, if you could, if I could add that for that, for that discussion.
And local.
And local, oh, yeah, if they got local, but I don't know if they're, that local, but.
Okay, so, thank you, Commissioner Adams. The motion was made by Commissioner Keith, the second by Commissioner Adams, I mean, Commissioner Council, correct?
With the addition, yes.
Excuse me?
With that addition.
With the addition that Commissioner Adams made. All, all in favor?
You, Evans, if that was to add my minority and local preference.
For her to at least have the conversation with him, you know, we, we've already done the RFP, and they already got it, we're just extending the contract, but I think we ought to at least raise the issue with him, and the next time we do a RFP, if that ain't what they want to do, then that's a thing, but I can't, we can't force them to do it right now, uh, but I think we ought to, I just want management to be able to, uh, request that and forward that conversation and have that conversation.
Okay, understood, thank you.
I have a question. Jimmy, you're the chair of that, and I see that Dr. Stewart and myself are on it. Will we be, kind of tell me when we're going to be meeting, uh, and et cetera, so I can kind of give a little clearer picture?
I, I was just notified earlier, two days ago, that I was going to be the chair.
Sure, okay, and we were just notified that we were going to be on it?
Yeah. So, um, I, I, I think this might be a situation where, um, this is a, a call that's needed to be forward, committee, because there are certain things that our committee has to do that, uh, to stay in guidance with whatever.
Yeah. Okay, Madam Manager?
Item 4I is consideration of an intergovernmental support, support agreement between the United States and Cumberland County for Fort Bragg Animal Services. Sally Shutt, um, has been working on this agreement for several years, and we have an update, if that's welcome, Sally.
I'd like to recognize Elaine Smith, who's here, our Animal Services Director. So it was five years ago that Cumberland County entered into the intergovernmental support agreement with Fort Bragg to provide animal control services on the installation. The original agreement was for one year, and it was renewable annually, um, for up to four additional years. So under the agreement, Fort Bragg pays Cumberland County to respond to animal services calls or dispatches within the portions of the post that are located in Cumberland County. Stray and surrendered animals from post are taken to our Animal Control Shelter on Corporation Drive. Animal Services invoices the post monthly for those services that are rendered. So over the course of the five-year period, Animal Control requested some pricing adjustments, and the post had agreed to those. Um, they've consistently agreed to those changes. So the attached agreement that's in your packet is for one year, and it can be renewed for successive one-year periods for four additional years. The Garrison Commander has already signed the agreement and has agreed to the changes in the prices for services. Um, you'll notice that, um, I mentioned in the memo that the cost for productive dispatches, that means when an animal is actually picked up, um, is impounded, it will go from $223 to $309. The cost for surrendered animals that are taken over the counter at our Animal Control Shelter that come from Fort Bragg is going from $30 to $309 per animal. Um, these are animals that are either reported as stray on Fort Bragg, or they are being surrendered by the owners who actually live on the post. So, um, Elaine, as our Animal Services Director, she calculated that $309 is the average cost for intaking, housing, and caring for one animal for an average length of stay of nine days. I also wanted to take this opportunity to mention that a part, an, an additional partnership has grown out of this Animal Services Agreement, and that's with Fort Bragg providing veterinarians and staff to perform sterilization surgeries on dog, cats, and livestock at our animal shelter, and they're doing that twice a month. It provides the surgical experience to these new graduate veterinarians that are beginning their army careers, and it's a valuable service for animal, uh, our Animal Services Department. And Elaine has reported that that has been beneficial for both parties. So, um, we're asking that you consider moving forward this recommendation to your February 15th regular meeting, approving the attached intergovernmental support agreement between Cumberland County and Fort Bragg for animal services provided on post.
Are there any questions or comments?
If there aren't any questions, I'll make a motion to move this to the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second. And I just had one question, how in the world did you get, I'm sorry, I'm having a few problems. Uh, from $30 to $309. I thought that was masterful. But I do second you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll address it briefly, um, I believe I was not in charge of the pricing structure when it was initially agreed upon. That is the fee that we charge a citizen of Cumberland County who is reclaiming their dog for the first day's impoundment. It doesn't take into account any of the subsequent days that an animal would stay with us. Therefore, I made the calculation to give us a more accurate estimate of what it costs for a total stay for each average length of stay.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, it was a motion and a second, all in favor?
Amen.
Thank you.
If I could, since we were talking about animal control, I want, you saw the mobile adoption van that was in the video clips. Um, Elaine is going to bring the mobile adoption van on Tuesday to the DSS parking lot, and you can have the opportunity, if you'd like, to walk through and see that before your goal-setting session. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item J, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir. Item J is presentation and consideration of the federal legislative agenda, and Ms. Shutt will also present this item.
Welcome back, Ms. Shutt.
Yeah, you know.
All right, so the Board of Directors of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners adopted 12 federal legislative priorities for, uh, 2021, 2022, um, during their Legislative Goals Conference back in January, and Chairman Evans represented Cumberland County as our voting delegate to that. NCACC typically, typically takes the lead on lobbying for items of statewide impact, and the association has partnered with a consultant to lobby for federal goals. So, um, there are 12 goals outlined in your packet. These deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, food system resiliency, disaster preparation and assistance and mitigation, um, supporting federal reclassification of non-intel communicators as first responders. We've already heard from C-Fort today, one of those goals is to support funding for opioid and substance abuse epidemic, high-speed broadband access, mental health, the illness in our county jails, which have been identified through NACO's stepping-up initiative, funding for health, human and economic services programs that are offered through our DSS and other agencies, support for older Americans fundings, uh, support for fundings for agriculture, conservation workforce, and other infrastructure programs. Um, I will point out federal goal 11, I'll read that goal completely. To support strong regulations and enforcement along with funding assistance or reimbursement to state and local governments when a federal agency such as the EPA regulates emerging contaminants and other discharges into drinking water sources. And then the standard federal goal that we have is to impose unfunded mandates. So in addition to be a member of the NCACC, Cumberland County is also a member of the National Association of Counties, and that legislative conference will be held virtually this year from March 20, March 8th through the 26th. In addition, uh, there's some background information I included in your packet, and that is the City of Fayetteville's Federal Legislative Action Plan. There are several goals that overlap between what the city is working toward and what the county is. Those include those goals related to COVID-19, infrastructure, opioid abuse, block grant funding, and PFAS contamination. So, um, this afternoon, management has a recommendation. Um, with the new administration in Washington, the med, management team would like to suggest that the Board consider the option of hiring a federal lobbyist. The NCACC work, and those goals are outlined, um, is very policy-driven, and it's prepared for all 100 counties in mind. It's not county-specific or project-specific. We want to improve Cumberland County's chances of tapping into potential federal funding opportunities for county-specific projects. There are multiple ways that we can expect the new Congress and the Biden administration to fund projects this year. Already, uh, the January 2021 Grants Alert was eight pages long. Those competitive grants, that process is already underway. There are stimulus and infrastructure packages, and then, um, congressionally-directed spending. Um, we've known them in the past as earmarks. So we are asking that you consider allowing staff to issue a request for quotes for federal lobbying services to assist us in navigating the new funding pipelines. So there's two considerations. One, the federal goals that are the NCACC goals, to, um, accept those, and then we can share those with our federal delegation, and then to consider allowing staff to issue an RFQ for federal lobbying services.
Any questions or discussions? Uh, yes, Commissioner Keith?
The City of Fayetteville has their own lobby, still.
Yes, sir. It's the same one who works with NCACC.
Is, is that a consideration of, uh, is, is this one of those deals where you wouldn't go with them because the city has it, or would that be a consideration also?
We would issue a competitive request for quote, uh, request for quotes.
I think he's talking to Sally about, would we consider working partners with this?
Oh.
Well, the question, is that, does that get messy if, if they're, they're up there? I, I don't, I don't want to have two competing federal lobbyists going against the same area, because we represent City of Fayetteville, Town of Hope Mills, and Spring Lake, too. But at the same time, is it going to put them in an awkward spot about going for the county and not for the city, or, you know, that, how they bring it along? I, I, I don't know how this works.
Um, in the past, we did have, uh, many years ago, we had a partnership between the city, the county, and the Chamber of Commerce, but that was when the Chamber of Commerce had the Economic Development Fund shut under them.
Hey, Vice Chairman Adams?
This is like a been there, done that thing. I mean, that's, we, we, we done that, we spent that money, and evidently it wasn't fruitful enough, and, and we ended up not doing that. You know, we're paying money to the NCACC, and we pay a good chunk of money to them. And I don't understand why we aren't asking them to be able to afford some of this stuff to us as opposed to hiring somebody to be in DC. I know they are, they're looking at all 100 counties, uh, but when the money comes down, and it comes down to a county, uh, if, if it's good or weak, or it may be a rural, or maybe urban, but I, I don't see, I, I just don't see the, the, we're, the things that we face, we hear in this county of hiring a lobbyist and rolling, we just did a, a, a grant person, uh, in the last budget cycle. Hopefully, we got some grants, we haven't gotten any update as to any grants that we've gotten from that, but I think that's what the grant writer does, is look at that. So I would not be in favor of hiring a legislative, uh, person, that's just one person.
All right, question?
Yes, sir.
Charles, in, in your experience, since you were representing us, kind of give us a, a general idea about what you heard, and what you saw, and maybe a little bit of what you tried to interject, because when I first looked at this list, you know, the first thing I thought was, wow, where's Cumberland County in this list? And I understand it's general, and it's very broad, but from your experience, what, what would you suggest?
You know, what I, what I would suggest is that we adopt this legislative goals because of all of that, or the great majority of that is inclusive of Cumberland County, things that we are looking forward to, things that we are looking forward to achieve here in Cumberland County.
To, to include a lobbyist?
You know what, as far as lobbyists concerned, I've always been in favor of lobbyists since I've been on the City Council, because of the council, they served us well. And, uh, according to Commissioner Adams, which, which probably have worked with the lobbyists here with the county during his term as.
That was before me.
That was before. I thought maybe you, I thought maybe you had worked with it.
No, I think, they even got rid of it before I got here.
But I would suggest, all the help that we can get. But I would suggest, all the help that we can get, to get the items, or get the issues or concerns that we need to have addressed, I would highly suggest it.
Good thing.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for asking.
The reality is, I think they're hoping that there'll be more money available with the new administration for local governments. That wasn't it.
I'm sure when we talk about applicants.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know what the cost is. I mean, you asked me to prove something, don't know the cost?
No, 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 no. We're not, we're just asking for your consideration to let us put a proposal together, get some responses, and then we would never move forward with anything like that without coming back to you. And I actually asked Sally to bring this forward. As a management team, we had some discussion about the merits of having a lobbyist. We now have a new team member, Angel Wright-Leneer, who was very involved with a federal legislative agenda with the City of Fayetteville prior to her coming to the county. And so, she has quite a bit of experience, positive experience, with having a federal lobbyist. One of the things that I believe might be helpful would be, we are trying to expand water into some of the rural areas of the county, and thus far, we've not had any positive progress on receiving any assistance from higher levels of government. In order to be able to make those projects work, we need an advocate, an advocate at the federal level to help us leverage some grant funding to be able to expand water into the rural areas of the community.
And again, the answer to your question, Commissioner, and with the experience you're talking about, that I received while I was on the city council, and working with the lobbyists, they work very well with the city as well.
How much money they bring back? I mean, the ultimate question is, and they ought to pay for themselves, and well over, I think any grant writer or anybody that's doing the lobbyists ought to bring back more than what I'm paying. If they don't do that, then it's really not that, then it's really not effective.
Mr. Chairman, since we have a new member, could we at least hear from Ms. White-Leneer's experience?
Absolutely. Welcome, Ms. Leneer.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. I just wanted to share with you, I'll give you one example. When I went to Mooresville, they had a lobbyist in place who was not, like, bringing anything home. So, I think they paid them about eighty thousand. The lobbyists at the city paid, I think we paid sixty-five for the lobbyists at the city. But while, you know, when I first went to Mooresville, they didn't feel like we're too prosperous to get grants, or we had a road that we needed to have built, and we weren't able to apply for a build grant. The first year, we did not get it, but we went up and visited with them, with the lobbyists. We visited the USDA team, we visited, you know, the senators and the house offices. The second year, we were successful in getting fourteen million dollars. So, I mean, you don't do that if you don't, you know, put yourself out there and get the assistance to go, and have the folks that have the relationships to work with you. I bought a list of the projects that I was successful with, the help of other department heads at the City of Raleigh and getting after the era in 2009. We received fifteen projects, twenty-seven million, five hundred and eighty-one dollars and one hundred and six, one hundred and six dollars.
Can I ask you, when you got those, how long ago was the...
That was, now, that was 2019. Era was 2009 for the Obama stimulus plan.
Two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine.
Did we have a lobbyist in 2009?
I don't believe so.
I don't know when they were here.
Now, the bill grant that I'm talking about was just received in 2019. So, I've been successful with the help of department heads, and with the help of city councilors and commissioners to, you know, lobby and to get money brought home.
Okay, so let me ask you this, ma'am, before you leave, and Commissioner Counsel has a question as well, a comment. Whenever you said that you all, that you're, whoever you were with at that particular time, they used the lobbyists, and that you also stated that we, that we as a group went with the lobbyists to lobby senators and other individuals, well, who is the "we"?
The board of commissioners.
The board of commissioners. So, the board of commissioners actually did part of the work in assisting in that. Thank you.
We took a backseat, and, you know, when they went to DC, the commissioners talked to them, and they presented the projects, and we did the work in putting together the federal legislative agenda, the lobbyists putting together the meetings. They also, for the bill grant that we got in Mooresville, they took up, it was for a road that was opening up a new economic quarter, so they took businesses, so it was a public-private partnership, so we took a delegation of folks to do this.
Okay. So, and let me ask you once again to make sure before I go to Commissioner Counsel, are you saying that a lobbyist that you're, a lobbyist, in your opinion, would be good to have? Are you saying that?
Absolutely. Particularly, yes, sir. Particularly with everything that Sally said, with the ability to, maybe the possibility of stimulus funds, congressionally-directed spending in the form of grants, and additional grants that might come down.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Counsel.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I had so many...
I'm sorry.
Questions and comments, but I've been with the lobbyists also.
I'm gonna vote in favor of the lobbyist. She came up here, she told me, I'm expecting fourteen million dollars in the next year, and so I hold staff to that. I'm going with the expert. The expert told me that it's worth it, and I can be swayed. I get information, I can be swayed and change my mind, and she changed my mind, so I'm gonna vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Sorry. Could I?
No, don't be trying to change it now. I done gave you my approval. You better take that and go with it now.
Okay.
But no, thank you for the information. It changed my mind.
Is there a motion for item...
I will move to do the legislative goals and the...
Approve the agenda, legislative agenda?
Yeah, and the lobbyists.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
And moving to the consent agenda.
Commissioner Stewart, there's a second. All in favor?
You, Madam.
Mr. Chairman, item four K is consideration of a lease agreement with the North Carolina Department of Agriculture, the Plant Industry Division.
Thank you, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, this is a recurring lease. This agency actually is part of USDA, operates a special program in our agricultural center. It's for three hundred and sixty-eight square feet of office space. That comes down to about fifteen dollars a square foot over the two-year period. The term is from January first, 2021, to December thirty-first, 2023. Staff recommends approval, or requests this be moved to the next board commissioners' meeting as a consent agenda item. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any comments or questions?
It's a small space.
It is. They don't need much space.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's been a motion, second, all in favor?
You, Madam.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Let me ask Tracy to stand right here. She has the next couple. So, item four L is consideration of the ACOM Change Order Number Two for 500 Executive Plots.
Welcome back, sir.
Yes, sir. ACOM is our architect of record for the 500 Executive Place project.
I have a motion.
You gotta let him go.
No, he's got...
You didn't get that email. You can't do that.
Thank you for the...
The reason we're bringing this to you is because this is a good thing. It's definitely worth discussing, letting you talk about this and be aware of. If you recall, we did have a different group working as construction managers at risk for this project. It was decided to change the design bid, bill process, and allow ACOM to help us administer some of this work instead of Valforbady, who was the construction manager at risk originally. Making this change saved the county about 1.4 million dollars. So, we're coming to you today to tell you, we still need services for construction management, construction administration. Those would fall to ACOM as detailed in the change order, and the price for that is the approximately sixty-four thousand dollars for those services. So, we're coming to you, asking that this be, staff recommends it for approval, and requests it moved to the next board commissioners' meeting as a continued item.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Counsel raised her hand.
All in favor?
You, Madam.
Thank you.
Item four N is consideration of a notice from the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners transferring the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Program and Fiscal Agent to the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments.
This particular item, as discussed in the past, the actual program and fiscal agent responsibilities for workforce development have been proposed to transfer over from the county to the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments. Our original plan was to do that February first, but then we were presented with a series of requirements and actions from the state, from the Division of Workforce Solutions, that had to be met prior to the transfer. That meant it was going to take a little bit longer, so we're still looking, now we're looking at a March first date for the transfer, and we will continue to work on those items and working in good faith, and after a discussion yesterday with the state, we believe we can hit the March first deadline with their cooperation. So, what we're asking for is your approval of this letter, which really is just the initiative, the kickoff, to get this process moving on the state side, and that letter's attached in your memo there. So, staff recommends approval of the letter, requests this be moved to the next board commissioners' meeting as a consent agenda item.
Any questions or discussion?
No.
If not, does the motion?
I move that we approve the transfer letter.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Commissioner at Council and Lancaster, all in favor?
You, Madam.
Item four N is consideration of a Water Service Utility Agreement with JFJ Investments for Rufus Johnson Road Subdivision in the South Point Water District.
So, with this item, I'd like to recognize Amy Hall, who's here with us, if there's any technical questions about the proposed agreement, and also our county attorney, Rick Morfield, worked on the agreement itself, and had some discussions back and forth with Mr. Franklin on this. So, what we're asking, what the applicant is asking basically, is to connect twenty-one different homes, potential homes, that would be in a subdivision off Rufus Johnson Road. There is adequate capacity for connection for this subdivision and for the remaining unconnected parcels in the area. This includes a disclaimer that was previously discussed, which has been included in a different previous application that was approved by the board commissioners. Staff recommends approval and requests it move this item, move to the next board commissioners' meeting as a consent agenda item, and be glad to answer questions if you...
Are there any questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Why not?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Lancaster and Counsel, all in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Lancaster, Counsel, Chairman Evans, and Commissioner Stewart, voting in opposition. Commissioner Adams.
The next item is consideration of an offer from the Board of Education of real property in accordance with General Statute 115(c)(518), and I'll ask Mr. Morfield, the county attorney, to present this item.
Someone has to...
Wayen.
Can you put that, it has its own string. This is a map of the TIA subdivision.
That's why she got her phone on.
Your mom taught you to dress in layers. Said you always did.
It's on seventy-three.
It might be on seventy-three, but it's not seventy-three yet.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I thought this stuff was automatically on the system.
That's okay, sir.
I move that we follow that recommendation anyway.
I'll be very brief, I just wanted you...
There's a statute...
Don't try to give it to us.
Yeah, there's a statute that requires the school board to offer your real property to the county on the same terms as it offers to anybody else. In this instance, they're actually offering to give it to the adjoining business. It's a very irregularly shaped parcel, as you can see on the map that I have there, and it's really already occupied by the adjoining business, it has been since 1993. And they say there's a bunch of trees that are causing problems for the neighbors. I actually went by this when I went to a doctor to see what it looked like. The trees are actually leaning on the guy who's occupying it, so I don't think that's a legitimate concern, but it's the manager, and my recommendation joint me to decline this offer.
Any discussion or...
I don't have any discussion on that, but it raises a serious point with properties that we own all over the county, not just us, but, I mean, these people been sitting on it for, they were gonna take it by adverse possession almost by any way, because they've been using it. But how many of our other properties that we just have, I think we need to take, I think we did it one time before, Madam, man, took the inventory of what all we own, or what the county owns, to be able, some of it we might need to divest ourselves of, some of it we might need to keep. I mean, but I think that we need to look at that, but that's an aside to what you got there.
But in light of that, Commissioner Adams, you know, a couple of years ago, you adopted a policy about the surplus property, and the tax office is now visiting every surplus property to update the tax rate every year, and they know if there's someone there, they report.
But I'm just somebody like this one. These folks been using this property forever. The school boards might have been able to get a little bit of money for it, or sell it back then, but now with all that overgrown stuff, ain't nobody gonna buy it, and it's an ugly little lot.
It's not. It's a... It's not a bad decision to decline the offer.
You should see that thing.
Make a great law office.
Okay, is there a motion?
But it's valuable to them, though. It's valuable to them. It's not valuable to anybody else, Rick, but it is valuable to people that own it.
Yeah, the school board could have offered...
They should offer some money.
Excuse me, is there a motion for this, or...
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, motion to decline.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
You, Madam.
The next item are the monthly reports. You will find in the packet, the monthly reports, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions to matter manager about the reports?
I do have one, just, and this might be big, just because of, it's just COVID, how has that affected our health insurance? I mean, because people have, we had a bunch of people with some underlying health conditions already, and then you got the COVID on top of it, so...
Vicky, could you come to the microphone?
Thank you. And if you don't, I mean, you can do it at another meeting, catch you off.
No, it's okay. We just got the...
Oh, you just got the...
And the inmates don't want a shot. I think so, Mr. Chairman. So, maybe surprisingly, the claims have not been severely impacted by COVID. We've not had, we haven't, well, we've had some people, you know, test positive, but no, we haven't had, we haven't seen claims increase because of COVID, and we're actually seeing the opposite. And so...
Maybe the stress levels down there, but...
Well, we actually discussed causes of that, and one of them is people are staying home, and they're... And one of them is people are staying home, and they're not going to the doctor, and they're not elected to have surgeries. And so this year, we're having another year of lower claims, not as low as last year, from, um, February, you know, from February to, to June. But, um, they are lower. Um, and so, um, the takeaway from that is that we should expect to see higher claims in future years as people start going back to the doctors and having those elective surgeries.
But I would compliment staff. I think they sent out a lot of stuff about, um, helping with health and weight and all of that stuff. I think that helps too. I think, um, so I just want to make sure that they continue to do that. Didn't you get on that?
I didn't get that memo. I should have done it longer before.
I think, I think that goes to Tammy Gillis.
Yeah, Tammy, I mean, they, they, I mean, she sends it out all the time. And, uh, I, I, you know, some of those, uh, things are-
Okay, Commissioner Keith.
Madam, I got a couple of questions on projects and, uh, and one comment. Um, is Tracy, is Tracy a project guy?
He is.
Okay. Well, I got two things. One is, in the area of COVID and everything else that's going on, I, I, I thought for years, we're in a public building, and every building has hands-free washing now, and we still got the old, the old water spigot. The wa, water spigots and, and things like that, that, you know, I, I'm sure that if we were ever going to do it, and there was any availability for grant money or COVID money, this would be a good time to do it. I know that the Crown Coliseum is also looking into that also for the, I think any place that does it, the public. Um, about maybe two months ago, there was, maybe it was last month, I don't know, there was a discussion about, um, expanding the commissioner's room or looking for alternatives. And I don't know if we had that. And the last thing is just a, a point of reference. You know, today, we voted on food and beverage tax at the Crown Coliseum. And there is almost 1.5 million dollars of projects that we're doing out there right now that, um, are not part of the operations, that is just part of the upkeep. So it just goes to show that that money is very much needed, and for it to go away would be detrimental.
So that's like five things. That was a five thing you did.
I just, I just spoke fast.
Commissioner Keith, I think Tracy can give you an update on the status of looking at Room 118.
Yes, definitely. So we have, uh, engaged a architect that's on the on-call list, and they've done some plenty of work. Um, so we're at the point now of, uh, going out for an RFP to see what the cost to do, uh, to, to, we need to put together some concepts to bring back to you. That was to be done in March, so that's on the way. Then after that, uh, if you agree, uh, upon a concept, uh, we would go out for, you know, with an RFP to see what the construction cost would be and that kind of thing. That's where we're at right now.
There was also a discussion, Commissioner Adams brought up, about repurposing possibly the historic courthouse for meetings.
Uh, those were the two items that we were looking at. One was downstairs in 118, or, uh, what would it take to get into the historic courthouse to do meetings over there? Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've, you know, I've, I've been on, ever since I've been on this board, I talk about the ADA stuff. And I think since this COVID, if you see some of these people trying to get in this building, it's just, it, it, it's, so I just want to keep it on the forefront. You don't have to say anything about it. I just want to keep it on the forefront, uh, that, you know, we just got to deal with, uh, with some of that. And if it's this building, this building is old, uh, old dirt.
I'm more appreciative of it now.
Right, okay. Yeah, you, because you're having to roll through. But I mean, it's just, um, I, I think, you know, when Jimmy talks about our citizens, I think we just gotta, we, we just gotta look at that. I think it's just something, it costs, it does, but we just gotta do it.
And so, if I may, that, that is a good point. And, and talking about the bathrooms and updating and things like that, one of the, um, reasons that we have not done as much of that is looking at repurposing this building if we should, the board should move forward with-
I vote to move.
Okay. Second?
Jimmy, you got a second?
Okay.
I was given a second on that one.
Okay, I got you.
Uh, Madam Manager? Item 7, is any closed session?
Not today, but thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Did I, that's only missing, did you talk about the water spigots?
That's where I was going, was that we, we have, um, not made a tremendous amount of progress. It's something that we will look into about the cost. But if we should build a general, um, government services building, we would do a major renovation of this building for the court system. And so do you want to do that piecemeal, or do you do it together? I think there's some low-hanging fruit that we can approach, that we can-
Right, because even if we decide to move, it's going to be a couple of years before you build a building anyway. And so you can't let what you have just continue to deteriorate without, uh, making some improvements and, and-
That's noted, and we'll, we'll, um, try to make some progress on that in the upcoming budget year.
Okay, thank you, Madam Manager. Is there any other comments or questions?
No, I already moved to adjourn. I mean-
Is there, is, he has, Matt, Commissioner Council? You made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Commissioner Stewart made that pretty quick.
There's adjourned.